Our invocation will be given by Pastor Gerald L. Smith, Senior, of Greater Love Zion Church of God in Christ. And Pastor Smith, just like to have you to come forward and congratulate you on seventy years of your church anniversary.
Oh, wow.
Also, yes. Everyone, please silence your cellphones. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag. Thank you.
Thank you. God, our Creator, we thank you this day for life, health, and strength. We thank you, God, for your divine provisions, for your protection, and God, for your promises. We ask that you look upon us even today as we assemble ourselves together to do the business that is necessary for our community, that there will be unity in our community. Let us work harmoniously together, God, that we may accomplish all that you have in your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God, and amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating our pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071, the government code requested arbitration by firefighter local 399 on behalf of civilian employee Rochelle Rogers. Also, G A D V, Inc., D B A, L and L General Contractors versus the City of Beaumont, cause number A dash zero two zero seven nine seven three. Pastor Smith, thank you so very much, and may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschau.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you. We have no proclamations, no presentations or recognition. Now is the time for any citizen who wish to speak. You may make a public comment on the consent agendas, item number one through four. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name. When it's time for you to speak, the green light will come on at the end of your three minutes. The red light will come on, giving you indication that your time is up.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. May I have a second? Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. May I have the reading of item number one, Mr. City Manager? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number one is to approve a resolution accepting maintenance of the street sewer and water improvements in the Champion subdivision Phase Two. On April twentieth, twenty twenty-two, a final inspection from all entities was completed for the subdivision, twenty-two lot subdivision. And recommended for approval are the acceptance of the street sewer water improvements for Champion subdivision Phase Two. The administration recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number two is a resolution approving the renewal of an annual maintenance agreement with Cersei Dynix of Lehigh, Utah, for use in the, for a software agreement for use in the libraries. Cersei Dynix is used in the library system for maintaining records for circulation, cataloging, patron portal access, and other internal processing. The software agreement provides twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week, unlimited telephone support, and off-site hosting. The agreement and the amount of eighty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixteen cents is for an annual period beginning September, twenty twenty-two. Funds are available in the general fund for this item, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, mayor and council, item number three is to approve an annual renewal of a managed detection and response, or M D R, service from Arctic Wolf Networks Incorporated of Eden Prairie, Minnesota. The Arctic Wolf Managed Detection and Response Solution software is delivered by this company. It provides twenty-four, seven monitoring of networks, endpoints, and cloud environments along with a managed approach to detection, response, and recovery from cyber threats. I think we all recognize the threat that cyber, cyber attacks have in today's environment. And as a result, we are recommending approval of this item. The amount is for one hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents. Funds are available in the general fund for this item, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number four is to a resolution approving the renewal of an annual support agreement with Creative Switching Designs Incorporated for the city's phone system. The My Telephone System is in use in a large number of city facilities. The system provides telephone communications, voicemail, and four-digit dialing. The annual cost for this service is one hundred and three, eight, one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two and ninety-five cents. Funds are available in the general fund, and the administration recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
So move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. This does conclude all of our agenda items today, and at this time, I will move to council member comments. Public comments, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was gonna say, let's skip that.
Public comments, and if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning, and the red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up.
Preston Tibido, ninety ninety-five Riggs, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I reside in ninety ninety-five Riggs. I've been staying there for twenty years, twenty-one exactly, and I have a comment concerning my neighbor across the street. He stays at ninety eighty Riggs. Okay, when I first moved there, he was knocking my mailbox down three or four times. I called the B P D to come out, so they came out, and I explained to them what happened. So the next week, the next two weeks, he shot my house up. At least, that's my opinion. And then cops came out, and then they talked the same old thing. I've been discussing this with them for twenty years, and this is tiresome, and I need some resource concerning this issue. And Ms. Muton, I had called her concerning this issue, and she was real nice. She came to the house, and we discussed the problem, right, Ms. Muton? And furthermore, we talked about it, so after she left, she says she was gonna do something. So this continuation, this study rocking, rocking, so I only had that much time. So, May the twenty-eighth, which was a Saturday, Friday was the twenty-seventh at night, okay, my neighbor, he stayed at ninety eighty Riggs. He was in his garage, and he parked the car in the back and shining the light, because my house is facing his house. And, and it came on my light, so he called me a racist name. I'm not gonna say it, because I have respect, you know, for y'all. So, furthermore, the Saturday, which was May the twenty-eighth, all right, I was sitting on my porch, B P D came out. It was three, one black, two whites, okay? He said, "Mr. Tibbo, I heard you did some shooting." I said, "Shoot? No, sir, not me." So Flanagan, the officer, came up to me and say, "I think, because the neighbor said you had a gun," and I said, "Well, you could take residue of my hands or anything, because I had nothing to hide. You know, I haven't offended nobody. I'm sitting on my porch, tending to my business." And so after that, he put the clips on me, handcuffs, whatever, and he brought me to Baptist Hospital. I said, "What this for? Because, because you told me you have anxiety?" I said, "Yes, I'm a disabled veteran." Didn't do nothing. Brought me over there. So the lady, Alita, from Spin Attack, examined me and told me, "Why did he do this? Say, ain't nothing wrong with you." I said, "I know." And then she turned around, Odom, the doctor, he never did see me, he never did talk to me, and they said that I had a violent behavior. I didn't commit no crime, I didn't do nothing, you know? So I said, "So they co-hoosed this together, and like you've been doing, co-hoosing it, all of them together." So, well, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm gonna let you finish your, your sentence, but your time is up, so just wrap it up, okay?
Okay, yes, ma'am. So it's all about accountability. I don't think it was appropriate. The whole deal was co-hoosed, and like, so this is all I have to say. I need to talk to somebody concerning this issue, because I'm a citizen, so-called citizen. I supposed to be one anyway. But it looked at me, and then furthermore, concerning the officer, I told him, I said, "If I, I'm not racist or anything. I'm not. I'm not perfect either." But I told him, I said, "If the shoe was on the other side of the feet, I mean, what would you do?" Because I had called the B P D eleven, twelve, thirteen times. Never, never did they ever put no cuffs on him. Never. And it's irritating, you know? It's not appropriate at all. And the Bible say, "How can you say you love God, who you've never seen, and he's your brother who you see every day?"
Thank you, Mr. Tibido.
So this is, I can't say, no, no.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
We have another one.
Okay, Mr. Roy. Terry Roy, ninety-one fifty, Shepherd, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. How y'all doing? I really wasn't gonna speak today, but I felt if I didn't, nothing wasn't gonna get done. I've been coming up here for a long time, and y'all know it, and it's about the ditches in our neighborhood in Amelia. I spoke with Mike last night about the dredging of the ditches. Are we gonna have to go through another flooding season before we can come out and just dig the ditches out? We need to start being proactive instead of reactive to situations. You know, I'm sure my neighbors are tired of being flooded. I mean, it doesn't take much to dig a ditch out. Do we not have the engineers that are able to come out and figure out what we need to do? If not, we need to find something that can. I know, I'm getting tired of coming up here talking about a ditch, a toilet. I mean, it's time for us to start being proactive. We talking about trying to build the city up? We'll never get there like this, never. And we all grown, and it's time we stop BSing around and actually start doing some work. I mean, how hard is it to dig a ditch out? Do we not have the manpower? What's, what's the issue? I've been coming up here for years, talking about that. Years, not months, years. When are we gonna start being proactive? I know y'all got a program that's going on now, but I'm sure it doesn't include Amelia. I'm sure. If it does, it may be two ditches. It's time to start doing what we, what y'all got voted in the office for. It's time.
Well, Mr. Roy, I'll speak with you after the meeting, because honestly, I know that there was time that was spent at your residence, and honestly, since the last time you've been here, I thought the problem was corrected.
Well, the problem, well, maybe of the flushing, it's a temporary fix. It works now and then, but as far as the ditch, not just in my, where I live, I'm talking about there in our neighborhood of Amelia. A ditch hadn't been dug out there in over thirteen years, and that ground, and that grass in those ditches has risen at least three or four inches in those thirteen years. And, you know, something has to happen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Getz.
I have a question for, I don't know if it's for Bart or Chris, but didn't we allocate, like, two million dollars towards the citywide ditching program, and does some of that include Amelia?
It was, the contract was awarded last council session, I believe, and the entirety of Amelia is, is included in, in this contract, and Amelia is actually one of the first sections that'll get done under it when they get underway. The entirety of the contract should be finished by December, and that'll be twenty percent of each ward's ditches in this first phase.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bart, do you know the start date for Amelia, or approximately?
I knew when they were gonna kick off last meeting, but I don't have it in, on the tip of my fingers right now. I can find it, though.
Okay.
It'll be soon. It's, it's very soon, next few weeks or something.
Next few weeks?
I would, I would assume so.
Okay, I'll get the information from you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, that's what I was gonna ask Bart. If possible, when you put your hands on the date, you can just email it to us, so we can just let the citizens in the neighborhood know it could be expected around this time.
I'll confirm the exact date, and I'll email it to you.
And also, we can post it on, on the website.
I believe it's posted already on, on the website. I can confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
The start dates are posted on the website? And, and not, I mean, if you're sending out, not just for Amelia, but for whenever they're gonna be starting at all the wards, if you could?
Well, the contract, we, what we'll have posted is what's gonna get done within the contract. We've asked them to do Amelia first, because of the McLean project that D D Six is doing. That way, all of that is done and wrapped up fairly soon. And we've also asked them to do Fort Pine Street, because we're about to get that Colliers Ferry pump station underway, and we wanna be done with the ditching on that, so we don't run into problems. Past that, the contractor's free to attack the rest of it in, in whatever order they think's most efficient for them.
Okay.
And Mayor, I believe we just executed that contract, but we'll ask Mr. Barkoviac to get us the exact start date, or the, at least the range.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, now we'll have council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. Been getting a lot of calls from, especially South Park neighborhood, about gunshots in the evening time, and I've been speaking to people, and I'm telling you, they, they said they don't, they don't call, because they don't think they'll be remaining, they'll remain anonymous, but if you hear gunshots, just at any time, you need to call the police. They can't, they can't be everywhere all the time. And like I always say, everybody has to do their part. Part of the community's part is to call in and let us know that's going on, so they can come out and investigate, because you don't, you don't have gunshots all the time. Another thing, wanna remind everybody about the Juneteenth celebration coming on, coming up on June nineteenth, Sunday, which is also Father's Day. Still have openings for barbecue cook-off and the car show, so just, you know, call in or go on the website if you wanna sign up for those deals. Also, wanna congratulate our mayor, Muton. She was voted Newsmaker of the Year by Southeast Texas Press Club, and just congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, you deserve it. You sure have been making a lot of news. I can't think of anybody else that would deserve it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's it. One other thing, I noticed some people asked me about the process of the meeting as far as consent agenda, and how come some of us never comment on it? But I don't know if everybody understands, we get the consent agenda on Friday. It's actually posted. So the council had, we actually go over this, all this stuff before the meet. That's why sometimes we may not comment on what's in the consent agenda or the regular agenda, because we've already went over it, we've already asked our question. So just for the general public, just to let them know, some, that's why we not always asking questions, because we, we receive this stuff a couple days before the meeting, and we have time to go over it. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Well, Chris beat me to the punch, Mayor, but I also wanted to congratulate you on being Newsmaker of the Year. It's been over ten years since I received that award. It was meaningful to me, and I know it's meaningful to you, and it is true that you have brought a refreshing degree of collegiality to this council, and I think we're working together well, and I think that's largely as a result of your leadership. Also, wanna remind people that this Friday night at the Jefferson Theater, we are going to be having a showing of Fiddler on the Roof. Now, probably most of you have seen that movie before, but if you haven't, it is truly one of the classics, and it's celebrating fifty years as a movie. It was a Broadway play before that, but it, it's really interesting this year, because it depicts a Ukrainian village called Anatevka, back at the turn of the twentieth century, that falls under attack by Russia. And it is, it shows the workings of a family, how they deal with family dynamics, with prejudices, with hatred against their people, and it's, it's just a moving, moving movie, and it's a wonderful musical, so I encourage everybody to go out there and see Fiddler on the Roof. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mike. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I'm gonna piggyback as well. You know, I've been seeing you on a lot of commercials, a lot of things on social media, and I wanna say thank you for what you do, and, you know, we appreciate you as the council. Every time we call, you there to answer, and you're literally everywhere. A lot of people don't understand the things that go on into council, how many events we have to show up at, and if they want the council members to show up there, you can just imagine how many events the mayor shows up at. I've spoken with her on several occasions where she'll call me at the event, and she's on her way to another, you look up, seven, eight events, that's an eight-hour workday. So I just want people to understand, you know, it's a high demand with leadership, and I think you're stepping up to the charge, Mayor, and I think that organization did a great job by recognizing you. Secondly, Juneteenth, I see a lot of people out here in Beaumont always brag about their barbecue. Here's your opportunity to see who is the king of the pit. We will have a first-place trophy, and we'll see if we can put your money where your mouth is. I see a gentleman in the stands who just left the podium, who said he was getting in the contest. I didn't see you on the sign-up list, so I wanna see you on the list, my brother. So, Juneteenth, please spread the word. We got Lakeside, Fantastic Voyage, they will be performing live. Shout out to Chris Boone and staff. He did a great job. Y'all went above and beyond and worked with everybody to get this and make this happen. And we have some wonderful sponsors as well, so please spread the love to the community. It would be completely free. It's not often you can go and see a concert to this magnitude completely free. We wanna show that we take pride in the heritage of Juneteenth, and we wanna celebrate with everybody together downtown Beaumont, Texas. And lastly, Bart, you helped me out with this, and I appreciate it. I know Councilman Samuel worked on it as well. Thirty-two ninety Pine Street, First Full Baptist Church. Energy got out there, they cleaned up some of the dirt, but the pastor sent me another picture, they still got some dirt left. He wanted it back the way it was before they done it, so if we can reach back out to Energy and get them to please fix the property back the way it was, pride to them doing the work there. If you can do that, I appreciate it, and once again, I know me and Councilman Samuel have reached out about that, so appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Felschau.
Other than congratulations to you, the newsmaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Neal.
Congrats, Mayor.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, we were able to attend Friday night's presentation by the Press Club of Southeast Texas, and just wanted to extend our congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Ditto.
Thank you. Bart? Thank you. Well, I would also like to thank the Press Club for the award, for everyone that voted, and I'm gonna have Lauren to please stand up. Lauren is our communications director that accepted the award on my behalf. I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It was something that was already planned, and I hate I was not available, but Lauren, thank you so very much for standing in my place and accepting the award on my behalf. And again, to you and all of the Press Club, I appreciate so very much for this award. I was, my phone started going off. I was at an event, and it started going off, and I say, "Oh, some," I really did, I say, "Oh, somebody has won." And I looked, and it was me, and Lauren sent me a picture of the plaque. As a matter of fact, I have the plaque here. This is the plaque that I received. It says, "Press Club of Southeast Texas, Excellence in the Media Award, Newsmaker of the Year, Robin Muton, twenty twenty-one." So again, thanks so very much. Also, several of us attended emergency management training in San Antonio this past week, June first, of course, it's the first day of hurricane season. Please, please, please get prepared for hurricane season. Don't wait to get your batteries, don't wait to get your flashlights. Register your phone with STANs, because when the hurricane hit, that is not the time to prepare. Please be proactive, make a plan, and we had some really, really, Sheree and I were in a, in a class where, literally, they've made out plans and routes, and just a point of contact for family members, just to say, "I'm safe. Look, we're here, we're safe, don't want you to worry," because once the, the phones get clogged and congested, then no circuits will be available for you to even get through. Also, one of the vendors had just, it's a flashlight, it's so neat, it's a flashlight, but you can automatically charge your cell phone, and you, you crank it, but when you have no electricity, you will crank to, to get your cell phone to work, or either sit in your car, ride around, but with gas being as high as it is, if you can get out and if there's a gas station available. And so, all of it was just be prepared, be proactive, have a plan for you, your family, make sure everything is updated, so that when it's time to get out, and when, if an evacuation has to be called, that you're prepared. Also, again, Juneteenth, June the nineteenth, Father's Day, the other thing that I don't think that was mentioned was the deadline to sign up for the barbecue cook-off and for the car show is this Friday. They've extended it to Friday, because they wanna make sure that all of the people that are strutting their cars and claiming that they're the pit masters are available to get out there and barbecue. And, you know, you bring your own meat, you bring your own pit, and someone is gonna judge it. Everything is free. Trophies will be awarded, and I know a couple of people that have some really, really nice cars parked in their garage. If you don't bring it out on Father's Day and Juneteenth, I don't know what other day you would bring it out. So come on downtown, join us, it's gonna be a great event. Again, Chris, thank you so much. The staff has been great to put this on, and looking forward for the The staff has been great to put this on, and looking forward for the entire community to, to come out and celebrate. Also, Councilmember Duryo.
Oh, one other thing, Mayor, I just happen to be a professional barbecue eater, so I'll volunteer to be a judge.
You made me lose my thought. So, again, come on out, and we already have someone that's a professional barbecue eater, so he's ready to taste. And Mike said he, he's ready. Also, I did attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It was excellent, excellent conference. Of course, Vice President Harris was one of the speakers, and you, you're mentioning Ukraine and the movie Fiddle on the Roof. President Zelensky gave a message via, from the Ukraine, and also the President of Columbia was there, just speaking about exchanging commerce with the United States. So it was a very, very informative conference. As a matter of fact, I called Chris while I was sitting at the table, gave him an idea that hopefully we'll get to implement here real soon, in the near future. And one of the reasons why we do travel to conferences is to get updates, to see what other cities are doing, just to bring ideals back to our area, and to converse with other mayors and other council members across the country. Because when you think your problems are just unique to your area, they're not. I mean, we're all dealing with pretty much some of the same problems, and some are different. We have a hurricane, they have an earthquake, or they have fires, but everybody has something that they're dealing with. And together collectively, just coming together and just listening to all of the different ideals and problems and problem-solving, you come up with a lot, a lot of great ideals. But it is now six oh two. Thank you for coming out to this evening meeting, and we will recess into executive session, and again, go out and spread the love. Thanks.